Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on July 30th, 2018. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. I want to thank everyone for being here and for adjusting your schedules to meet this meeting. Just a quick note, this meeting's been scheduled due to a mix-up on advertising dates for these two public hearings. The city was unable to include these items on our July 17th meeting and we are cool to get them taken care of before our second meeting in August because our first meeting in August is canceled because we have National Night Out that evening and therefore wants to be out to support all of our community events. It's a wonderful vibrant program in Burlington. We have one of the best National Night Out programs in the state and the country and we all want to help support that. So we appreciate you all adjusting your schedules to help us get this done tonight. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this evening and we pray for each and every individual that's in this room and for the needs of our city and the decisions that we're bestowed to make on behalf of such. Father, we thank you for the individuals that have put together our body of work before us tonight and thank you for the countless hours and time that's gone in to research all the things and the things that have been given to us. Father, we ask that you lead, guide, and direct us in these decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we recognize our city clerk, Renee Moore.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts or ventures. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning my subject.
None. I do. I have one, the first item, I have a business that's involved with Mr. Moser's company. So I'd like to recuse from this if I could.
I move to recuse Mr. Owen from participation in that.
Call those in favor of recusing Mr. Owen on that agenda item, please say aye. Call those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much. Mr. Owen, you can stick around for the approval of the agenda. Before us is the agenda. Do I hear a motion from council to approve the agenda?
Second.
Call those in favor, please say aye. Call those opposed, agenda has been approved. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, the public hearing is set to consider an application to rezone from I-3 Heavy Industrial District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the additions to the Burlington Athletic Stadium. The property is located at 1450 Graham Street, references Alaman's County Tax Identification Number, and being a portion of 139644. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a city request to rezone the Burlington Athletic Stadium for the proposed construction of a new restroom facility and a new ticket slash souvenir sales office. This proposed development has been vetted through the city's Technical Review Committee. The property was rezoned in 1986 from R-9 Residential to I-3 Heavy Industrial because of off-premise advertising located in the stadium. That's the outfield signage. The rezoning is needed because the locations of the new buildings will not be able to meet the setback requirements of the I-3 district, which is 40 feet from the property line at the street. A 15-foot setback is being requested in order to facilitate placement of these buildings. This will not change the ability to allow advertising within the park nor anything else about the park. No one from the public spoke in opposition. The planning staff recommended this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council. Mr. Bill Moser is here to speak to this request.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and both members of the council. I'm Bill Moser. I live at 610 Fountain Place here in Burlington. We have been working with the city and through our Technical Review Committee process realized that we needed to request a, because of the setback requirements off of the street, we wanted to go back to the R-9 setback requirement as it was before it was rezoned to industrial. But the fact that we now have conditional industrial zoning, we thought we would show you a couple of the issues relative, they'll be relative to the conditional request. So we've got a quick PowerPoint presentation and I'll be very brief if you could just scroll through these. The existing grandstands, if you haven't been over there, they were painted this spring. Facility already looks nicer and we hope that with the improvements of the two outbuildings and the entrance plaza, we're creating essentially a concourse for the historic property there. Okay? We've also looked at pathways within the park and arrival opportunities to this central plaza and as such, we've designed it appropriately. So the approach from the south, from the west, and from the east, well, we have a grade issue that we need to accommodate and you're going to see that in a second. Okay? There's a rather significant slope from Graham Street down to, and there's essentially a sidewalk there that, or walkway that nobody uses. So we're going to be taking that out and we're going to be approaching the grandstands from the directions that I just mentioned. Okay? The restroom facility will be to the east. Okay? The entrance building with the ticket windows and the memorabilia shop will be on the west side and then the central entrance plaza will be in between the two. Okay? So what we are requesting with the rezoning for this conditional industrial zone would allow us then to accommodate these two buildings well within the revised setback along Graham and Henderson Streets. So this is a photograph that we took last year when everything was blue and with the pendants and the new entrance way, we hope that everyone's going to consider it much more attractive and usable. The restroom building again, as I mentioned, is to the west. We're also introducing these corrugated awnings that will tie everything together. They'll be applied to both the existing grandstands as well as the new buildings. Okay? A view from within the central plaza with the grandstands to the right. Okay? And again, part of the property, well, the entire park was zoned R-9 originally. Back in the mid-'80s, it was rezoned to I-3 to meet some signage issues and now we're requesting that the I-3 be zoned from Industrial 3 to Conditional Industrial. Okay? The small section in yellow there is the actual portion of the I-3 that we will be working within if you all approve the zoning to Conditional Industrial this evening. And again, a rendering of the sketch-up model of what we're proposing to do. I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have.
Any questions from council?
Am I misunderstanding you, it looks like the restrooms are to the east. Is that right?
That is correct. Yep. Restrooms are to the east in this rendering, they're to the right. The ticket window and retail shop is the building to the west in this rendering to the left.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thanks.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding this topic from this side of the room? Anyone from this side of the room? I don't believe we have anyone in overflow. Okay? Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Call those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye. Call those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
Mayor, I'm moving to approve the request based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan. The action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All right. Call those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Call those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much on that item. Moves us to item two. Welcome back, Councilmember Owen. The public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R-15 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a 288-unit apartment complex. The property is located on the north side of Bonner Bridge Parkway approximately 1,600 feet from Danbrook Road, references Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 106902 and being a portion of 106900. This time, we again recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This proposed development has been vetted through the city's Technical Review Committee. The developer of the proposed apartments has agreed to make road improvements to the intersection of Bonner Bridge and University Drive here and related traffic signal improvements. The traffic impact analysis for the project did not require any road improvements, but they are offering improvements at their own expense in order to help mitigate traffic concerns. Some of the public comments received have concerned the impact of additional traffic as well as safety for the children at Highland Elementary School across from the proposed site. Planning staff recommends approval and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the rezoning request to council. Mr. Thomas Johnson is here to speak to this request.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to come here to staff this, I suppose. Allow me to do this so I can pull up my PowerPoint. I'm Tom Johnson. I'm with the law firm of Williams Mullen in Raleigh, 301 Fairble St., Suite 1700 in Raleigh, here on behalf of Zimmer Development Company, the developer of this project. And what I'd like to do to begin with, I have Adam Tucker here with me with Zimmer Development. I'd like him to come up and just introduce Zimmer Development to the council and then their experience and that sort of thing. I think it would be helpful. So Adam, if you could, you can do it right there. Welcome.
Hi, Adam Tucker with Zimmer Development Company, 111 Princess Street, Wilmington, North Carolina. Some of you may recognize me, some of you may not. My hair was a lot darker last time I was here. We, for those who remember, we were the developer at Shops at Waterford at Lowe's Foods, which we still own and maintain and there's some construction going on next door, which is not ours, but we were the owner of that property until this year and sold to a local gentleman here. For those of you that do remember or don't, when we did Lowe's, there was a lot of concern from the residents of Waterford. There was some miscommunication on the road that connects the shopping center to Waterford. Some people were under the impression it was a walking path, some people were under the impression it was a golf cart path and when the plans came in, it was a full-blown vehicular access. So you guys probably remember Bob Harkrader was here at that time, Charles Bateman was helping us out at that time and, you know, we worked together and kind of came up with a solution that helped everyone at the end and that center's been there over 10 years now and we haven't ever had a complaint from a resident of Waterford to this day for, you know, traffic concerns or, you know, any of the things that seemed to be concerns at the time have been alleviated and not really come to fruition. But Zimmer Development's been around since the late '80s. It's a family-owned company. The family also owns Reed's Jewelers, which you may or may not be familiar with, but it's been around a while and, you know, we're long-term holders. We don't, we're not merchant builders as evidenced by Lowe's Foods. You know, we get plenty of offers every month. You know, there's all kinds of money floating around out there now and we're just not that group. We're a group that takes pride in what we do. We're good at what we do. We do what we say we're going to do. And tonight, you know, is no different than any other project we've ever done. We certainly understand there's some concerns from the citizens and be happy to hear those out and respond to them in a tactful and truthful manner and hopefully at the end of the day, everyone will see that this is the right project for this piece of land. So I'll turn it back over to Tom to do the presentation, but thank you for your time and I do realize that this was a special meeting to help us out and I appreciate that. It does not go unrecognized. Thank you.
Thank you. And we really do appreciate the fact that council was willing to schedule a special meeting for this, especially because of some contract deadlines that my client had. So it was helpful to him to go ahead and get it scheduled. So we do appreciate that. This whole process started obviously with Technical Review Committee, but then we went to, and this is the site right here, we went and had a neighborhood meeting at the school on April 23rd. So this has been going on quite a long time. We had about 20-some folks show up at that community meeting. Obviously, there were discussions about traffic and the school, some of the same things that you may have seen in some of the emails and other things that may have come to you in the meantime. But at that meeting, there was a specific request to put a buffer along Bonner Bridge Parkway, put a berm with a landscape buffer along Bonner Bridge Parkway. My client had no hesitation and immediately said, "We will do that." And so that's already part of this and part of the condition and we will, my client intends to build that buffer, that berm along Bonner Bridge Parkway. But I think, and let me give you an idea about what we're talking about in terms of apartments. And in this day and age, apartments are really in demand. The millennial generation wants flexibility. They don't want to be burdened with home ownership. I go back two years ago, I went to a conference in Raleigh and as strange as that may seem, the speaker was from MasterCard. Now, why would the speaker from MasterCard have to do with real estate development? The speaker from MasterCard knows how people spend their money and so can share that very easily. And the key point was, a lot of money was being spent by the millennial generation on furniture. So they will spend money on furniture for an apartment to make it look really nice, but they may get a job, you have a job here for a little while, but then may get a job somewhere else across the country and they want the flexibility to be able to move out of that apartment and move to that job. But the other thing is millennials like the sense of community that an apartment complex provides. It provides amenities. It provides the ability to socialize. Those type of things to this new generation are important. So that's why you'll see someone like Zimmer Development building apartments across the state from Asheville to Garner to other locations. And this is the rendering of what this apartment complex will look like and the plans for that. This is, you know, kind of how they're breaking it up with both siding and stone and kind of the earthy colors that you see around now and that look very attractive. But let me get back to traffic and I want to give a little history on the traffic and how, the traffic study on this project, which you, your city requires traffic studies like any other when you're doing a big project. Timmons and Associates, Jeff Hagundel with Timmons and Associates is here and he did that study and did the initial one based upon the scoping meeting that we have with NC DOT and city staff. We did an initial TIA and came back with that. City staff looked at it a little more carefully and said, you know, "We'd really like to increase the scope of that a little bit. We'd like to include more information on Macintosh and spread it out a little beyond what they initially scoped for us." And so we said, "Well, that's fine. If that's what you want to do," you know, we said we would do that. So the final TIA on this project took into account Macintosh at full buildout as well as the apartments at full buildout next year. Now, we know that's not going to happen. It's going to be over a period of time. The apartments may start going in, may not be online until, you know, it's about a 12-month process, so they won't be online right away. But the TIA, the traffic study you have, assumes the very worst-case scenario. And even with that worst-case scenario, the traffic study required no improvements. It said we could, you know, did reschedule some turning lanes and do that, but really no improvements were necessary because of the small impact that this project had on the overall traffic in the area. And really, it pointed out that the key traffic generators in the area are the school at peak times, morning and afternoon, and Macintosh. So we started talking with city staff, realizing that it wasn't requiring any improvements and so we talked through that a little bit and said, "Well, what can we do to help the community to address existing traffic concerns?" And working with city staff, this is what we came up with, what's on the screen. And this is at Bonner Bridge Road and University Parkway. Knowing that, as we've seen and you're probably going to hear about, there are concerns about traffic, these improvements that we're agreeing to do, not only, well, the traffic, there was no mitigation required for the apartments, but it more than mitigates anything the apartment complex may require and in fact goes a step further and reduces the level of service at this intersection to a Level C for the foreseeable future. Using funds, it's going to cost in excess of $250,000 from my client to make these improvements. And that includes adding an additional left turn lane and adding an additional signal and including this part here, which is additional pavement in order to allow for that left turn lane. So by doing so, that limits any potential slowdown at peak times so that all the traffic clears within one traffic site with signal cycle. And that was the goal, is to achieve that at peak times. Now, coming in, you wonder, well, we're taking a lane coming in from Bonner Bridge and we are. But as you'll see, it very quickly splits into a straight lane that goes down Bonner Bridge Parkway and the right lane that goes to Danbrook. So the Danbrook traffic turns off really quick. So really, this is a dedicated inbound lane for Bonner Bridge Parkway. So it doesn't slow it down, it keeps traffic moving and won't slow down at Danbrook because the right-hand turn traffic gets out of the way. So this is what we're doing and this is the key point here. This is a traffic improvement that is not otherwise funded by the city or DOT to improve the existing traffic situation as part of this project that we're voluntarily doing. What that means is if this project is not approved, obviously this improvement doesn't happen and so it doesn't help mitigate the existing traffic in the area. Now, this happens a lot, we realize that, but I did want to emphasize that for the purpose of council and consideration of our request. But in addition to that, another improvement that my client has offered to do in cooperation with the school system, should the school system designate and want to, is to put a sidewalk that connects the apartment complex to the school to encourage walking traffic for any students that go to the school. It's subject to schools' approval. We haven't gotten an indication one way or the other from the schools at this point as to what they'll do, but that's a condition that we've agreed to offer to do that, should that work with the way the schools would want things to do that. As far as beyond that, you know, I've got the traffic engineer here available for questions and she may want to ask him. Tim Shaw's here with the engineer for the project that can answer any specific questions with respect to that. You know, apartments at this location make sense more than anything as in the staff report. Your comprehensive land use plan calls for this to be neighborhood, commercial, suburban, residential. Multifamily fits within that designation even though this property is currently zoned R-15. It fits with that designation and is consistent with your comprehensive plan. In addition, there's a multifamily development that's been approved to the east. There is a multifamily to the west. It fits in with the multifamily component of a comprehensive plan involving single-family and multifamily with the multifamily being closer to the commercial area. And the reason that makes sense is it reduces trips. If you want your density in an area where folks can take short trips to go to commercial and get the services they need. And again, just across the interchange, you have a major commercial center. So if you have the apartments in close proximity of that, to that, it's more efficient, more green because folks don't have to go a long way to get what they need. In terms of traffic in general with apartments, there's, you know, concern with the number of units we requested here at 288. With apartments traditionally, and again, our engineer from Timmons can speak to that, traffic is spread out over a long period of time. It doesn't follow the traditional peaks that might cause issues with the school or anything like that. Folks are coming, going apartments at various times throughout the day because they're folks that are on different shifts. They don't work the traditional nine-to-five and for whatever reason may be leaving at different times. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have right now or any of the other experts I have here are happy to answer questions. I would like to reserve some time after those that are opposed to the project have an opportunity to speak to address their questions and address any of council's questions at any time.
Any questions currently from council?
I want to be real clear on the entrance off of University, the egress on the Bonner Bridge. What's going to change on the entrance?
Okay, what's going to change here is to put this additional turn lane in here. Currently, this is two lanes coming in, so we're having to move the median and take that lane to use as a left turn lane.
Right.
But the numbers substantiated the fact that it's better for outgoing to have that additional left turn lane. And we did this with the city traffic engineer and ran it by DOT and our traffic engineer. So this was the recommended reconfiguration of that intersection.
So when, so the premise being they're going to get off on Danbrook pretty rapid.
Right.
Bonner Bridge flows straight through. How does the storage facility there where they're going to have their ingress, egress on the Bonner Bridge, on the Danbrook, is there a D cell lane for them or a turnout? Do we know?
No one may be able to speak to that. I don't know that particularly.
So the storage shelter, they didn't have any additional improvements required other than, you know, sidewalks, but they have such a low trip generation that it's not going to be an issue for that side.
So we're comfortable with trip generation on that facility?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, though. I did want to be able to clarify. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask you or your traffic person, I'm looking, you're saying that you are adding, you're taking out some of the median on University in order to, in that blue area?
No, we're not taking out some of the median. We're actually adding pavement here so that there'll be enough room.
For the street, the actual street?
For the actual street, for these three left turns, you need that extra pavement for that outside left turn to be able to have room.
Okay.
But we're moving the median in pink right here, magenta. That's an existing median that we'll be moving over to accommodate the additional left turn lane on the University Drive.
And the aqua color is all curbing, is that?
That's existing just edge of the right-of-way to designate that. We could do all of this within the existing right-of-way.
Well, I'm wondering over here in that area where you're adding streets, are you adding, you're just showing?
You're talking about right here? Right here?
Yeah. And the, that half semicircle that you've got there is, it's just showing where the limits of that, the side of the road will be after.
Correct. That's where we're adding the pavement and the limits to where that pavement will be. Now, in addition to that, which is not a cheap proposition, but we have to add an additional traffic signal head so there are not existing traffic signals that are sufficient to cover the additional left turn lane. So my client is paying for that as well to add that to the additional, I mean, the existing support for the traffic signals. But we did an analysis with DOT so far as engineering-wise, the ability for that to accommodate the additional signal, which it can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council?
If I could, maybe this is no mic. The timing set up at the stoplight now at the intersection of Bonner Bridge and University, how would that change with the additional turn lane and?
Well, we would definitely look at it, the addition, but right now, you'll find, we talked about this as well, you're going to get stopped on University, especially in the morning hours. It's a free flow, free run, but there's also time given to the side street because of the uses along that street. So we look at the whole package, the whole program and see if we need to adjust it. It was actually recommended without this for us to take a look at that as well, just with the traffic on University. So it's going to continue to improve, but we still have to be aware of what's coming off of the side street on Bonner Bridge, especially in the peak hour.
So I'm not going to put words in your mouth then. Will the flow off of Bonner Bridge onto University be at a level that will then clear that area in the early morning hours and will that, what impact would that have on the flow of the university traffic going towards the hospital?
Well, you're going to, you'll see, you know, we're looking at a level of service C and D, so that's hopefully going to clear within two to three cycles.
Okay.
So you're going to see, you're going to see some impact in the peak hour, much as we do around the city. But after that peak, we didn't identify, nor did the study identify any challenges with that location. But we do think with looking at the signal timing, we can improve it throughout the day, not just the peak hour. But you will, like I said, it won't be somewhat coordinated where you won't go from one side of the road all the way to the hospital on a green. You might likely stop at this location.
Now, with the fire station being built on Bonner Bridge now, just up from the school, obviously there's automatic controls in terms of when the trucks leave, that clears lights, is that not correct?
That's correct. They're tied with GPS connected to the vehicles when they pull out. It's sirens running. It's an active call.
Everything would stop then?
Yes, it would preempt, it would give them the right of way they need to get out.
Now, being out there at this time of day, how often is there traffic leaving the school? I talked to the assistant school superintendent today and he indicated there was a really, really, a very good flow of traffic going into the school and getting out, especially turning right back on Bonner Bridge, headed towards Danbrook. Now, he indicated there could always be an issue if you tried to turn left, went back into Macintosh because you turned across traffic.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have any records or any, how often are there cars or traffic back? Do we have any records or any, how often are there cars or traffic backed up in front of the exit from Fire Station Number Six?
We have not, we've noted that what we call the micro-peak, there's going to be a challenge along that entire area, but that's typically the AM. The PM peak, even if the school getting out earlier is not a challenge, but the AM peak, it quite possibly could happen, but, I mean, we have not received, I know of any, like, consistent complaints that it's impacting the fire service or the driveways there. But that is a congested area, I mean, the people that live there, we recognize that, but it's not untypical from our other school situations. In the peak hour, and they, just speaking of school time, that's, there's almost 700, 800 vehicles that go in and out of that school driveway in the AM peak.
So based on that then, it must be 75, 80% of the traffic that goes to Highland are car-driven, instead of buses?
Yes, you could assume that from the data, yeah. And there's a, there's a high number that is coming to the school from other places. It's not, you know, that's what the data could show you, yeah.
Any other questions from council before we begin the public hearing?
I do want to point out one thing too, though. I mean, the thing is with coming into the school, we've got two entrances here onto planned, onto Bonner Bridge. And so on the AM peak, you know, we could get out here and exit, the apartment traffic's going out, it's not coming in, and it doesn't go in that area where the fire department is, because that's the inbound traffic going to the school. In the AM peak, obviously the residents of the apartment are going elsewhere. So that's why we're in having two exits. And then the other part we're trying to accommodate is accommodate any children that may be in the apartment complex, to encourage them to walk via the sidewalk that we've offered, to potentially help with that situation. Just did want to point that out. All right, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll ask that before everyone speaks, they please state your name and address clearly for the public record, and then we'll ask that folks please keep your comments to three minutes this evening. If you're speaking on behalf of multiple people, you're more than welcome to recognize those folks, but you will be limited in your time. All right, we'll begin at this side of the room.
May I? Thank you. That's all right. I don't like the anxiety that these meetings induce, so I like to get it over with. First of all, I'd like to say, as I found out about the project, I called each and every one of you guys, I was able to speak to everyone except.
John, you could state your name and address.
I'm sorry, John Oaks, thought y'all knew me by now. 2266 Glen Kirk Drive, Burlington, been there 10 years, McIntosh on the Lake. And I'm not as tall as some of these folks, obviously. All right. I like to think I'm rational. I know I'm Type A, I like to think I'm logical, and I like to think I'm reasonable, although my wife would dispute that many times. But as I found out about this project, I got to be honest with you, I was pondering back on my days when I was on a P&amp;Z board, because I've looked at a lot of TIA reports, and I appreciate professionalism in staff, these people are great. And I never demonize the developers. Met the attorney tonight, now the young man, seem like fine people to me. But because of my background, we're not just in the resume about me tonight, but because of my background in this, I have a little expertise that I'm not going to tout that I think I could, that could present technical arguments for everything presented, and I say that respectfully, okay? So I don't know the code here like I did in Sebastian, Florida. Sorry, I lose my voice. But let me just start with a couple of things. And this, and I don't mean this to be arrogant or disrespectful, I've got the John Oaks TIA report of 10 years in that community. I was one of the original people there. And we could also discuss comprehensive master plan, there was always splitting of words and things, these are legal matters that a simple guy like me, you know, is not an expert on, like, you know, the attorney. But I would dare say that the vast majority of each and every one of the people in my community, when they lived there, they were shown, were shown a master plan, that you, and I understand technical terms from a P&amp;Z perspective, comprehensive, I appreciate that. But all of us were buying houses based on, can I draw your attention, I don't know item three, this right here? No, no, I'm good, I'm good. This right here, put this on TV. Because I'm just trying to say, I know a little bit about this stuff, because I don't like these kind of meetings, find it very contentious, and I like to get along with folks. But we bought our place, if you didn't know, you should know, 120, and if I'm not mistaken, it was CR 949, if you look at that little area right there that is, you know, that is presented here, it's directly across the street from the fire department. CR 949 is already been, that was part of the master plan, we're going to have 120 apartments here. Guys like me used to say, don't buy a house if you don't know what everything is around you, because a lot of times, things aren't what they seem, and they're not the way they're presented, and you're buying your ass, right? So I told my wife, ah, we can live with 120 apartments. Now, I did not know, thanks to my neighbor, Mike, that the R-15, because initially I called him, Mr. Joey over here, great person, great staff, people who work, that's my impression. 30 to 50 units, 30 to 50 units, is what this section, you know, we're going from 30 to 50. I got to wrap it up, I'm sorry, I didn't know I had limited time on a public, all right, well, I'll wrap it up. We're not talking about 288 apartments, talking about 408. Because if you go with that CR 949, it's already part of the comprehensive plan, so I'll say this real quick, each of you guys got this, I would appreciate your consideration of the following, I'm confident my request is representative of the vast majority, if not all, of residents of MOTL. Reasonable people appreciate private property rights, I especially do. Laissez faire, I'm a little further to the right, buyer beware. These developers have a right to develop their property. Just as reasonable, a property owner developer can appreciate why families feel it is equally reasonable that a developer honored his original commitment to develop his property within a community under the original terms, in this case, R-15, still make a good buck, 30 to 50. And was originally presented to all of us in the community before this property was ever developed, you know, before people started buying homes. One minute, 30 seconds, Mayor, I appreciate it. It becomes even more reasonable for consideration to maintain the present zoning agreement of R-15 for this particular property, because our community is now operating as that community was originally envisioned, and my guest, Mr. Huffman, was on the city council, can remember all this stuff, my guess you were on the city council at that time, you probably remember the master plan and all that stuff going on. Presented for consideration many years ago, and long after folks like me had purchased their properties. Because see, 40 years ago, I'd been the guy living in the apartment, so I'm not against anybody living in an apartment. Please support the rights of this developer to develop his property, let's go with R-15, 30 to 50 units, as originally discussed, and honor the rights originally presented to the families within the community. I sincerely request that the council members and developers adhere to the original plans that they committed to prior to their ever being McIntosh on the Lake community, and I appreciate y'all for your speech. Thank y'all for indulging me.
Thank you, John.
That's the right thing to do, that's the right thing.
On this side of the room, we'd like to speak. I will ask, out of respect, so we make sure we have enough time for everyone, if we could please hold applause and comments. We want to make sure you all have a chance to speak this evening. Welcome, if you can state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Bob Rayner, and I live on West Buck Hill Road, directly behind the proposed apartments. I wanted to address three items, and I'll do them quickly. First is, we presented to each of you a petition, and I happen to be one of the people collecting signatures for that petition, so I wanted to share with you my experience. There were 375 signatures. Personally, I knocked on about 150 doors. Less than 50% of the people responded to that knock, they weren't home, or they were home and thought I was selling Fuller brush. But those who did respond signed, with the exception of two people who did not speak English. So we realized the petition is not legally binding on anybody, it's not certified by anybody, it has no bearing other than, for me and for the community members, it's a pretty clear sense of what we feel about that apartment complex going where it's being scheduled to go. Second thing I wanted to address, I've been to three meetings now, I was at the Zimmer Original meeting, at the zoning meeting, this being the third meeting, and I've heard a lot, and from very professional people. What I haven't heard is the compelling reason that this should be done at that place. It requires rezoning, it's not zoned to do this. What is the compelling reason? And to what benefit would the community derive if it's done? And I suggest I don't see the benefit. What I see is some traffic increase, some use of the school system, some use perhaps of the fire department, from people who are not going to be involved that much in the community, because their transit, I suppose, I don't know that. I don't see the benefit. If we're going to reverse zoning, shouldn't we reverse it to something that has benefit for the 2,000 people in the community? Soon to be 4,000 people, shouldn't it be something that services them? Professional building, or buildings for professionals, accountants, doctors, dentists, that actually provide services to the community? Or perhaps a high-end retail area, like these people can develop and have developed at Waterford, that would service the community? The only third aspect that I wanted to address was, it seems to me when we talk about moving this land and that median, and having turn lanes painted on boulevards, we're sort of avoiding what I think we all know is going to happen, there's going to be a lot of traffic. There's going to be a lot more traffic when McIntosh is done. So should we at this point start talking about a different entrance into Highland to take some of that stress off of Bonner? A different exit, perhaps that's 139, behind the rest area, another way for McIntosh to get out? I would think we're better suited as a, as a city to start looking at what happens in 15 years when that place is loaded. Bonner Bridge can't handle it, I don't think, I'm not a traffic guy. My comments, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome.
My name is Geraldine Fitzgerald. I live at 4105 Gilchrist Drive in McIntosh. I can speak to you about population density. As a New Yorker for 40 years, I moved out to Utah for '23, just before the huge boom, before the Salt Lake Olympics. And I can tell you, as now retired teacher, school counselor, that when you increase that density without considering the schools, without considering the children crossing Bonner Bridge, the children and the handicapped children, that you are doing a great disservice to our community. And the last thing, because I know from my speech teacher at St. John's, to keep it short and sweet, get to the point, as a New Yorker. As the school goes, so goes the community. And that's what I look at. When I first saw those lines dropping off and picking up kids, I thought there was a bomb scare. That's crazy, and you're making it crazier by rezoning this. It's a wrong thing to do. And again, as the school goes, so goes the community. Thank you.
I'd like to thank these guys, the Zimmer Project, I could thank the council, Mayor, seeing us. I do have a map I'd like to show you.
If you can state your name and address first.
Sir, my name is Ricky Bell, I live at 447 Bonner Log Drive, that's in the Inverness This is the plan that John was talking about, how this place was developed. Currently, as of today, we have 832 occupied homes, with the process of building 52 more, 194 more, 46 more, and 48 more. Traffic one-way in, Bonner Bridge route. Planning commissioner guy said, well, you go Springwood Creek Road, have these people live up this way. Then I'm going all the way through and go up that Seymour Lane Road, cross that Seymour Lane Bridge into Guilford County. This gentleman here, Mr. Owen, asked the question, how is the fire department going to get out? That fire department was there two months before they had to put up a red sign to tell the people, don't park in front of this, don't stop in front of the firehouse. Now, that's how it impacted them. You have the chief there, he can, he can test it, it's a big red sign, park right there. It is a mess going in and coming out during those times. And we already have 2,000 individuals, because each one of these houses got at least two people living in them. Four, four-bedroom, five-bedroom homes, like I said, we got over 832 people living in them now. So we request that you guys take a look at what we're going to prove. He addressed it very well, why are we rezoning? We don't need to rezon. We need to stay with what we have, because like John said, when we bought houses over here, and most of my neighbors in here bought houses in here eight, nine, 10, 12 years ago, bought it with the understanding that we're going to have this. Now, the situation has changed. Why are we sitting around waiting for this guy to build 120 apartments? When is that going to start? We approved that two years ago, has not started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good evening, council. Patrick Mills, 1981 Glen Kirk Drive. When I first found out about this project, this development, learned a lot about the city, for our winning planning and development, everything that goes along. Got great staff, Ms. Nelson, Mr. Lee, been very responsive to my emails, Nolan and Mike over there, great people, had a meeting with Harden about all this, to try to help me understand what goes into thinking about it. Like I said, I learned a lot, still didn't satisfy that it should happen, so I've spoken individually to everyone, I didn't get up with Mr. Harold Owen, unfortunately, but I'm sure y'all relate some communication to him, but I still, I'm still opposed to it after all I've learned, even though there's probably going to be some good things, although the revenue that can come from apartments, but I still think multifamily can still be developed on R-15 in condos and townhomes. I want to thank all y'all for your public service, I know it's difficult, nine times out of 10, so I do appreciate it. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, I am Deshaun Sickles, I live at 1063 Ken Ross Drive, that's, we don't have the other one up there, the apartments would be in my backyard. We just bought our home earlier this year, our first home, and I just have three, three topics to address really quickly, one of them being the elementary school that's right there. When we bought our home, we bought it with the intention of having a wonderful school and a wonderful community for our baby, that was the little noisy one we had to send out. And having an apartment complex adding 288 units in our neighborhood, it's going to overcrowd that little school there. I heard excellent things, that was part of the reason we bought that home right there. So it's definitely, I'm not saying- My second concern is, of course, the fire station right there. Another, you know, great thing about that neighborhood, fire station's right there, very safe. What happens if there's an emergency and the traffic is insane from, you know, the congestion? Because let's be honest, 288 apartments, two cars per apartment, because that's how we live nowadays, at least. So yes, it will be congested. My third, my third, I guess, what would you call it? My third?
Thought.
Thought. Would be the home values. So the gentleman mentioned, you know, that apartments can bring income for the city, sure. But the taxes that the residents of McIntosh pay, I'm pretty sure the city would much more enjoy getting that amount of money from all the homes going in McIntosh than whatever revenue those apartments can bring. So the city would actually benefit a whole lot more. The reason I bring that up is because some studies have shown that apartment complexes near certain neighborhoods can devalue or bring down the value of the homes nearby. So, in the city's best option, the city's best option would be, if you'd like to have more money, homes, taxes on homes would get you a whole lot more than having apartments in there. But I just wanted to state my concerns. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it. I need to go check on the...
Thank you, Mrs. Sickles. Anyone else on this side of the room? Sir, we'll get you. Okay. Welcome.
Hey, thanks for having me. My name is Mike Bailey, and I live at 2288 Glen Kirk Drive. I'm a UPS driver, so I see traffic all the time. I'm always in traffic. Always see distracted traffic, which is even worse. Secondly, my, my wife, she's a elementary school media coordinator at a school here in town. And I know for a fact, from studies coming through that school, that a lot of apartment, apartments don't bring the best of kids to schools. Usually, they're a little lower on the grades. Could be a fact, could not be a fact, but that's what I've heard from other teachers. But what I see is, I see a lot of public safety hazards. I mean, the intersection at Bonner Bridge and University, it's already congested. There's always accidents every couple of months right there at the intersection. If you add a lane and you tighten the other one coming in, it's still gonna be problems. Something that was just stated by Ricky was the sign that the city put up for the fire department. I mean, yeah, when traffic's there in the mornings and afternoon, it's blocking the whole road from the school all the way almost to the median. I mean, and what's gonna happen is, in the future, if these apartments come in, they're gonna see that traffic. Do you know what's gonna happen? They're gonna turn a right. They'll take the long way through the neighborhood to go out the back, to stay away from that traffic. But what that means is, while they're driving through there, they're passing every subdevelopment that has kids standing there waiting on the bus stops. There's people already speeding down that road. Speeding 35. We have people pass us, because you may go 37, while they want to go 50. And that's a huge concern, because then you got kids in jeopardy. I mean, it's just, it's not right, and I don't think it's good for kids at all, when it comes to the elementary school, the bus stops, the fire department, someone has an emergency, it's blocked, it's too congested. There was something else I was gonna say, and I just lost it. And then they were saying they're gonna have the berm to the front of the apartment complex. Well, if you look at the diagram, it's pretty much a blind turn. You come up to the berm, you're looking left and right, and you can't see, because they're gonna have berm and shrubs there, which is another issue for driving. I think that's, that's really all I wanted to point on, but, oh, the elementary school, sorry. It's already in capacity. So if these kids come in with all these apartments, with millennials or young kids, I mean, that means we're gonna have trailers for kids to be taught in. That school's the newest school in Alman's County, and it's already in capacity. So that means the city's gonna end up having to add another school, probably another middle school eventually, which I think 10, 12 years down the road is just gonna be a disaster.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Reisch. I live at 2025 Sinclair Trace, which is in the Avalon section of McIntosh. I wasn't planning on speaking today, so I don't have anything prepared, but I understand that the developers are going to be responding to concerns. And I do have questions, because I understand that a traffic study was done. That's not my area of expertise, so I don't know what is involved in that. I do a traffic study every day, and I have a son in Highland. And I think sometimes on paper and working with numbers doesn't give you a full picture of what's actually happening logistically, you know? In terms of the load and the extra, you know, numbers of cars, maybe it might work. But I would like to understand whether there's actually been any observation of what it looks like on the street as, as parents line up to get into the school, as cars line up in the shared median between the two-lane, between the two-lane street. I know that there are high-end apartments right outside of planned urban developments like this. I totally understand the multifamily to single-family and how that all works. And I personally understand why the city of Burlington would want that, and it brings, you know, professionals to the community. But just not right there. It doesn't make sense to have that many units right across from the school. Are children gonna be walking across Bonner Bridge, the, the main artery into a whole, you know, in, the main artery into McIntosh? I mean, you have no idea how, you know, the commuters, the morning commuters, pass the cars, like they're standing still sometimes as they are waiting to bring their, you know, to bring their kids into the school, as it is. So if, if people are then gonna drive their kids across, how exactly are they going to merge in with the, the cars that are already waiting along the street to get into the school? It just, I'd, I'd like to learn a little bit more about whether they actually observe the drop-off and the pickup during, especially during the morning commute. And I'll just go on record as saying that it doesn't affect me personally as much, because in the afternoon, I'm picking him up at after-school. But I see it on my morning commute as I drive out every morning, so. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming and answering our questions.
Thank you, Kimberly. Mr. Johnson will address questions following the public hearing. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
My name is Lynn Matthews, and I live at 1201 Falkirk Drive in Burlington. I lived in Greensboro for 20 years, and I made the decision as a single person, retired, to move to this community. And I did on the basis of what I saw coming in. But now, if you look at what, this is going to devalue homes, devalue the neighborhood. And, and that was a promise that was made to me when I bought that home. And, and I look at what you're doing coming into university, and I drive that road, I go the back way to avoid it. Traffic is backed up, there's going to be a fire, and the fire department's not going to get out, and there's gonna be a loss of life. It's, it's going to happen if you have all this, and you're gonna have children crossing the street, so you've got all this traffic, and you're gonna have children from the apartment crossing the street, and one of them is gonna get hit. And when I drive that road, and there's a slight gap, somebody makes a left turn into Highland right in front of you, and you have to slam on brakes to avoid them. It, it's a situation that's not gonna get any better, and I don't think narrowing down the, the, and, and when I first moved here, I thought, okay, I can go around Fountain Well. The thing, I was in worse trouble, because then I end up on that road and have to make a left turn, and that's not gonna happen. So, traffic is awful. You're, you're devaluing, you're changing the whole scope of the neighborhood, and I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good night. My name is Ricardo Tagliaferro, and I lived in 2047 Glen Kirk Drive. Recently moved in, in January. Absolutely glad to be a part of McIntosh on the Lake. So, the only thing I'm opposed is to this developed, to be, you know, put in place, is because it's 288 apartments. That's where the traffic is gonna be incredible. There are millennials already there that will, you know, you know, buy those apartments or rent them. We have in McIntosh a lot of kids that will become millennials. There's gonna be a lot of cars, will multiply. We have, you know, at least two or three kids per house. And that's going to be a really important problem for everyone, you know, whoever made the decision to approve it or, or not, you know? I would love to see a school, a high school being developed for our kids that are growing and, and, you know, trying to be a better citizen. Having an apartment complex so big, I don't think will help. So, I'm just publicly saying that I'm opposed to that, and I respect the business for everyone else, but we should have either a, you know, a sports complex, or maybe a university, or a high school for the McIntosh on the Lake that is growing a lot. And when I bought this in November, I didn't know about this new addition, so I'd really, you know, I'm opposed completely about that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ricardo. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Kristen Hedrick. I actually own several properties in the McIntosh on the Lake neighborhood. The residence that I'm living in currently is 2020 Glen Kirk Drive. As you can obviously tell, we had a petition going around with a significant number of signatures on it. Obviously, we've been made aware that that has no legal holding here, but I think it gives you a very good indication of how the majority of our residents feel. I was one of the initial homeowners that was sold, the dream on the map back there that you've been shown. I'm, I'm understanding that the neighborhood has gone through several developers and things like that, and things have changed, which is fine. I heard, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, but I heard what he had to say, and while I understand that there have been traffic studies and such shown, I am one of the millennials that he's speaking about, so I feel like I have a little bit better insight about what we're looking for. I have lived in an apartment before. It's not my ideal of where I wanted to end up in life, hence living in McIntosh now. I own several properties. I'm obviously concerned about the home value and the devaluing that I think will come with having an apartment complex in the front of the neighborhood. But I'm also a millennial mother who has two children who go to Highland. The traffic is a nightmare, in the mornings at drop-in and pickup times. I'm severely concerned with the safety as far as it being right at the entrance to an elementary school for various reasons. Some of mine are political and some are not, so I'm not gonna get into the majority of them. But over the last few years, we've seen a certain rise in crimes against schools, elementary schools included. And I do think that it's definitely not realistic for us to expect that we're gonna be able to control who's moving in across the street from an elementary school. So that's certainly a concern of mine. Another concern that obviously most people have mentioned is the traffic. I do think that it's going to be a problem for our fire department that's been there. We were very excited to have that so close with the number of residents. I have a five-year-old who lit something on fire this week, so I'm really happy to have the fire department, if we needed them, to be able to get to us quickly, because mac and cheese in the microwave didn't go well. So, I would like for them to be able to respond to us in a, in a rapid time, which I believe is mostly what they're there for. For sure, the interest of the school blocks the fire department every day when school's in session, there's no doubt about it. I have done drop-off and pick-off, first working with or from home, so being able to do that for my children and see it firsthand. I'm one of those people who would like to turn left out of the school, and it, it's a nightmare, it's impossible. I've sat there for 30 minutes trying to turn left, it's not gonna happen, and that certainly won't get better, adding another huge amount of people into the front of the neighborhood there. So I think that the gist of my concerns is obviously the traffic, the impeding of our fire station here, the devaluing of the homes, and being sold what we were sold 10 years ago when we brought the property here. I would, I'm fine with it being single-family homes. Obviously, the clientele that McIntosh brings is something that we would like to see stay for the safety of our children, and I appreciate you hearing us today. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Scott Morris, I live at 1158 Falkirk in Sterling. I also back up to Bonner Bridge, so the little traffic concern that was being mentioned, I hear daily. 726, that's, I believe, is the current student population in Highland. 120 is pretty close, pretty rough. My wife isn't a director there, but I would, it is a pretty close estimate of the after-school program, which is one of the few that, that the school district has. Just that amount alone doesn't justify an entrance, two entrances, across from the school. 1,200, Mr. Bell said 826 residents. There's a lot, there's probably more than that now, all coming down and through there. The traffic study, with respect to you guys, I'm pretty sure that you didn't do a very good job with that. Sorry. There's at least 10 apartments just within the area, within a two-mile radius of that school, at least 10, there's probably way more. I just, you can't keep track of them, you guys are approving them left and right. Burlington should be a sleepy city, should be carried. It's a great city, it's a beautiful city. You're doing a good job turning things around, putting, making the city look good again with the sports complexes. Apartment after apartment after apartment, it's a bad move. We bought here because the values of the homes were starting to rise. You guys cut that off. Our values have just plummeted and gone down. So homeownership, nah, that's not the right way to go about it. I understand and I agree with the first gentleman's idea. You do have to have some apartments, maybe the 50, let's keep it the way it is. Your traffic, again, with respect to going down Bonner Bridge and going to Danbrook, Cox Toyota gets, what, 200 cars a day, if that? That's the only traffic going down Danbrook. There's no reason, if you're gonna put any apartments over there, for there even to be an entrance on Bonner Bridge. It's ridiculous, wasn't even thought out at all. And that speeding concern, like I said, I, in Sterling, I live up back by the clubhouse. Kids race up there. People, people race up there. I back up to that and listen to it daily. People running that live, don't even live in the community, just fly through there just because they feel like flying through there. The speed on that road, absurd. 35? Very much think it's 35. Trust me, I've been past them numerous times. They hate me because I go 35. It's ridiculous. You gotta, you guys gotta actually, really need to rethink about doing Bonner Bridge. And I've watched from my hillside, these wonderful kids walk up to that pole with their towels, not paying attention, sitting there doing this, walking out in the road, whipping each other with towels, and some moron coming by there at 55, almost killing them. Apartment complex just, would just add to that, because they're just, they may want to go out somewhere else. Should it be a mixed use? Would it be a professional use? That's what it was planned on. I'm, I'm a 90-year resident. Same plan, same sucker did the same thing. My builder went out, out of business, and we got another builder in there. Retired being promised stuff. 826 of us, we all vote, times two. You folks that vote yes, you won't get a vote again. Mr. Mills, Mr. Dobson, we're not becoming close, they will be winning next time.
Thank you, Scott. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I'm a resident, 1208 Falkirk Drive, Isaac Gibson.
mixed use? Would it be a professional use? That's what it was planned on. I'm a 90-year resident. Same plan, same sucker did the same thing. My builder went out of business and we got another builder in there. We're tired of being promised stuff. 826 of us, we all vote, times two. You folks that vote yes, you won't get a vote again. Mr. Mills, Mr. Dobson, we're not becoming close. They will be winning next time.
Thank you, Scott. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I'm a resident, 1208 Ball Kirk Drive, Isaac Gibson. And I actually sell homes in Macintosh on the Lake. And just recently, and I live towards the back of the neighborhood. And first thing I want to say is just safety for the kids. That was my biggest concern. I have a three-year-old, a four-year-old. I avoid going that way at all costs in the morning and in the afternoon. And that's just right now. So, granted, I know they did a traffic study, but what happens if that study is not really that accurate or correct? What happens if they didn't realize that, hey, we're building, the company I work for, another 150, 200 homes, and other builders are still building as well? So, if this does happen, and I pray that it doesn't, but if it does happen and their study is not accurate and we have worse congestion than we do now, what's the next step after that? Are they going to come back in and add another lane? Or is there anything that's going to be done to hold them accountable if the problem gets worse? Because right now, it's terrible. I mean, you heard the laughs of everybody when they said, hey, what happens, you know, when somebody tries to get out of there with the fire department? I mean, I avoid that, like I said, at all costs. But recently, I had a young woman come into my office and say, you know, I was about to buy a house in the front of the neighborhood, but I just found out they're about to build, you know, 288 apartments. You know, now I don't want to be up there. What do you have back here towards the back? And I might not buy back here because really, it's going to affect everybody in this community. And I thought about it. I'm like, you know what? It really is. It's going to affect every single one of us when it comes to our property value, but most importantly, just the safety of our children. And like I say, they can do all the studies they want to do, but I mean, just drive out there every day around that time and see how bad it is today. I would have loved just to hear that, hey, they're going to fix the problem that we have, not add to the problem that we have. Because to me, 288 units, I mean, that's going to be a lot of traffic right there. And what they say can fix it? I mean, I'll believe it when I see it. And if it doesn't happen, then what's the plan? If it doesn't fix it, what are they going to do next? So, they're going to say, hey, you know what? We're done. You guys approved our plan. We said we were going to do this, and we did. Now the problem's back on the city, back on the taxpayers. Then what's going to happen? And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time. And I definitely strongly would hope that you do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nora Leach. I'm actually living in 4227 Abimorron. I am a Realtor. I have been a Realtor for 21 years, and I am a small business owner for 21 years too. I own Leach Realty.
Nora Leach, what's your last name?
Leach. L-E-A-C-H.
Oh, Leach.
So, I spoke last time. I do agree with everybody. I'm the one who provide the information to the community how the homeownership versus rental actually devaluates the value of the property in a 13%. I sent you guys an email with the facts, with the link, but nobody has talked about the incoming traffic. So, they start talking about to take one of the empty lines to open another one out, right? What will happen if we have an emergency? How will the ambulance will come into our neighborhood? We are 827 houses, times four, sometimes more. 2,500 residents. Are we not valuable enough to have a fast services from the hospital? I mean, you go out from the back row, I can take, like, I don't care, you know, this traffic, because I live right there in the exit of Witset. You drive by there, it's two more resonies that they start trying to do of the city of Witset. They only have an option to go straight up to and hit north, South Church Street, and it's already back up. You guys already put the light and then everything, or come to Macintosh. So, Witset is already resounding too. So, what I don't understand is how the city coordinate the resonations around the city to actually contribute to the overpopulation of the school system. How? And I want to point out the University Drive, the way they start trying to, it's two lanes. So, are they talking about to have three lines going into two? I don't understand how, how that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from this side of the room? Normally, we get one side and then the other side. If you'd like to speak. And I don't believe we have any in the overflow tonight, so.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Marcraft. I live at 4094 Gilchrist Drive in the Glenmore area. I lived 20 years in San Francisco. You want to talk about traffic? There's traffic. I just came 10 years, living in Washington DC. You want to talk about traffic? There's traffic. I drive down Bonner Bridge Road in the morning when school is being dropped off. I think I'm in DC again. Now, I don't understand why we don't have buses busing kids to school here, and that's a different subject. But the line of cars out there is terrible. That's the kids. What I would like to mention about our community is I am an AKC judge. I love dogs. We have 26 miles of sidewalks here. There's people walking on those sidewalks. There's people walking dogs on those sidewalks. They cross the streets, and the traffic is atrocious. It's not just affecting kids. It's affecting peoples that walk that sidewalk and dogs that are being walked. The Ken Ross area in here, they walk their dogs out. I assume this apartment house is going to be pet-friendly. Where are those dogs going to go? Where are those pets going to go? In the community? Are they going to come out on Bonner Bridge? It's just more overcrowding of not only people and cars. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else who'd like to speak? Do I hear a motion from Council to close public hearing?
Set.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is now closed. This time, we'll hear any questions from Council or Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to address comments.
Well, I hope I have an opportunity to address the questions that came up. And I don't know if it matters about closing the public hearing or not, but I do want this to be on the record in response to the questions that were raised. I do want to emphasize once again, the traffic improvements we're doing at University Parkway and Bonner Bridge were at the request of the city as an option to help the current traffic situation, notwithstanding the apartments, to help the current traffic situation get better, and spending over $250,000 to address that. And that does take into account the apartments that'll more than mitigate whatever traffic the apartments have. But I do want our traffic engineer just to address protocol, how he did his study and how he does his study, because there was a lot of questions about that. And I think it's only fair to Council to have that as part of the record for him just to summarize what he did to come to that analysis. And including, and the folks in Macintosh need to understand, we did a maximum build-out in Macintosh, including two office and commercial sections of Macintosh that are not developed were included in our analysis. So, it was taking that into account. And Mr. Hakonadel can speak to that because he can speak of the fact of how office and commercial generates much more traffic. So, Jeff, if you could come out, please.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hakonadel, 5410 Attorney General, Raleigh, North Carolina. Most loved person in the room.
If we could, just out of respect to the speaker, please, no murmuring, no comment.
So, I'll speak to how the traffic study was completed. We completed the traffic study to NC DOT and City of Burlington guidelines. Basically, what we did was we went out, we observed traffic, we counted traffic during the peak hours. It's the peak hours of the roadway, not the peak hours of the school. It happens at the peak hour of the school during AM peak does coincide with the peak hour of the road. Peak hour of the school during the PM peak does not coincide. We did not look at the 2:30 to 4:30 range for the school. So, we looked at a 7 to 9, and we looked at 4 to 6, which is the peak hour of the roadway. This is a typical peak hour of the roadway. It's the standard protocol for traffic studies for NC DOT and City of Burlington. We analyzed the existing traffic conditions at the, let me go through, make sure I get all these, make sure I'm listing all the intersections. We looked at both-site driveways. We looked at Buck Hill Road and Danbrook. We looked at Buck Hill, Bonner Bridge, the Highland Elementary School driveway in Bonner Bridge, Danbrook, Bonner Bridge, I-85 northbound ramps, University Drive, I-85 southbound ramps, University Drive, and Bonner Bridge Road and University Drive. We looked at those for the existing conditions. We looked at those for a build-out and a no-build condition. So, basically, what we did was we took the traffic that we collected, we added on a growth factor, and forgive me, I don't, I think it's 3% growth is what we used. Yeah, 3% growth rate, an ambient growth rate, basically just 3% across the top, just added straight on to the existing volumes. Then we added traffic from the Buck Hill Village Apartments, 120 apartment units. We added traffic from the Bonner Bridge single-family residential development that's located in southwest quadrant of Bonner Bridge and University Drive. It's going to be 102 single-family detached houses. We looked at traffic from the 103,000 approximately square foot B-safe storage. And we also looked at the Macintosh Lake, Macintosh on the Lake. We looked at two different build-outs. For the original study, we looked at 150 detached houses. We talked to several developers and asked approximately, how many units can you build in a year? Our study is going to be built out in approximately one year. So, we asked, what is the typical number of, number of single-family units that can be constructed and sold occupied in one year? And so, we went a little bit on the high side on that and said 150 units. We completed the traffic study. We turned the traffic study into the city. The city came back and said, we'd really like for you to look at a full build-out also, including everything that's scheduled for Macintosh and Lake development. As part of that development, we looked at 1,575 units. We looked at 475 apartments, and we looked at 282,000 square feet of office development. We took into account, and I apologize, I miscounted the units, but it was actually more conservative. We counted 650 existing units as opposed to the eight, I want to say 32 or 850 or the actual current occupied units. We analyzed that traffic using Synchro traffic analysis software. That's the standard software required by NC DOT. Oh, let me step back. I apologize. We analyzed the no-build, and then we generated the traffic for the proposed 288 apartment units. The traffic was generated using the ITE Trip Generation Manual. ITE Trip Generation Manual was the accepted manual by the NC DOT, by the city for generating trips for this type of development. That manual takes into account numerous studies. I mean, I could, I don't have the number here, but it's several hundred studies that have been completed for similar developments and came up with a trip generation from the, projected trip generation from our apartment complex, or the 288 apartment units, and added it on to the no-build traffic to come up with the build traffic. All those scenarios were analyzed using Synchro, and the output basically comes in a grade. Synchro, by the way, uses the Howie Capacity Manual. It's a federal document that's been vetted and accepted by transportation professionals. Basically, what outputs is a grade. And if you think of it like a school grade, A through F. A through D is operating below capacity. E is operating slightly above capacity. It's, you can consider it turbulent, I guess. And level service F is above capacity, and you're basically, you're starting to see longer queues. After our analyses, when we looked at, I mean, we can, we can go through each intersection, but I'm going to focus on University Drive and Bonner Bridge Parkway, but we can go through as many as folks would like. This used existing signal timings. I know there was concern about that. After we did the original analysis, it was level service C and level service B, that's AM and PM peak hour, for the 2018 existing, 2019 background, level service C, level service B, after the addition of all the background sites that I mentioned, including only 150 units from Macintosh, not the full bill. I'll get into that in a minute. And then, when you looked at build traffic and build levels of service, we ended up with a level of service C and level service B, again, build volumes. Now, when we added on the additional units and the office and the apartments that are going to be constructed or already approved for the Macintosh and Lake development, it did go to a level of service D during the AM peak hour. And I want to say, I apologize again, let me look, make sure I'm saying this right, level service D and level service C. So, DOT guidelines and standards, as well as the city's guidelines and standards, state that intersections that are not operating over capacity, which would be level service E or level service F, do not need mitigation. Therefore, we did not offer up mitigation for those, that intersection, because we were still operating below capacity. However, we talked with the city, and the city came back and asked, and I can get a little bit into the improvements as well to kind of address some of those comments. We went back to the city, and the city, we talked to the city, and we offered up the improvements that we, that were shown on the screen a little bit earlier. Basically, what will happen is we're going to take the median. The median currently, currently, you have two receiving lanes coming onto Bonner Bridge towards the Macintosh development. One is striped as a through lane, one is striped as a right turn only that drops shortly down the road. Are you going to call it up? Anyway, I'll keep going. And then you've got, it's the fourth slide. Okay. Right. So, then you've got, so you've got two receiving lanes, and then you've got approaching University Drive. You've got a left, a shared left through and a right. The currently, the proposed plan is going to be, we're going to take the median that is currently between the two receiving lanes and three exiting lanes and move it over or move it to the north, basically reducing the lanes incoming to one lane, add a third or a second exclusive left-turn lane. So, ultimately, you'll have three left turn, or two left-turn lanes, a shared through left and a right. The pavement that's, the pavement that's shown on the northeast side is required in order to basically extend the lane that's going to I-4 to east, sorry. So, basically, that third lane can be received and basically will, there's adequate space for basically vehicles to make that left turn. Currently, if you look at the volumes that are, that were collected at the intersection of Danbrook, the right-turning traffic is less than 10%. I think it's, and I can get the exact numbers, but I want to say it was somewhere in the 400 going through and 40 going right. In the future, we did not project many more trips heading on to that, making that right turn. Once this improvement is constructed, based on the software, the Synchro analysis software and the Sim Traffic Simulation Run, we did, traffic will not queue beyond the existing. And when I talk about, when I'm talking about queuing, I'm talking about folks trying to head on to University Drive, spilling back towards Danbrook. The traffic does not, according to the software packages that we use to analyze it, does not spill back to Danbrook or will not spill back to Danbrook in the future. There was talk about how many cycle lengths it takes to clear or will take to clear the intersection. We observed Sim Traffic run. Sim Traffic is, let me, let me step back. I don't want to get too technical, but it might help. The Synchro is a macroscopic model. That means basically, I run it once, I run it 1,000 times, it gives me the same answer. Synchro, or Sim Traffic is a microscopic model. That means it uses a random number generator. I run it once, it's different. I run it twice, it's different. So, it gives you a varying degree of, basically, it adds, it distributes traffic in different ways. And so, it gives you a cross-section of what the road's going to look like. We ran various simulations and basically came out with the fact that we never exceeded two-cycle late delay at all at that intersection in the future. Once the full, and I'm saying this, once the full development is built, that's full Macintosh along with the 288 apartment units, as well as all the background developments and a 3% growth. Wanted to also address one more thing that I heard on several occasions, talked about the trips to the school. The way that the DOT requires us and the city requires us to do a traffic study, we do not reroute trips that are currently going into the school. We can only add on two. So, it's more conservative look at the traffic volume. So, the trips that could be currently going to the school from area residents that don't live in this area, that are going to move to these apartments, will now, you know, be rerouted to the school, but we could not show that. So, we had to show a, an addition on top of that. So, we are double-counting, in some cases, these trips. So, that, you know, that's also, and then, I think that's, I think that's, that's all that was asked.
I think that covers it. Are there any questions that you may have? Jeff's at the microphone. Did anyone?
Jeff's at the microphone. Did anyone have traffic questions?
You're saying you double counted. Could you repeat that?
Yeah. Basically, what happens is when we do a trip distribution or trip generation from the apartment. So we say we have 288 apartment units. We plug into the equations from the ITE Trip Generation Manual. It outputs how many trips go in and out of the apartment complex during both peak hours. We have to add those trips directly on to our network. So we have an existing network. We grew it by all this traffic and then we had to add those trips on top of it. What I cannot do, or what they do not allow me to do is take trips that are currently going into the school and reroute those trips instead of them coming from the east to west, you know, coming from west to east from the apartments. I can't do that. I double, I double count, basically.
What are the dates of the study?
The study was conducted in May of 2018. Traditional Calendar Schools were in session when we did our counts.
Jeff, if what you're saying is true too, you are proposing a crosswalk on Bonner Bridge to the school with the plans. And I mean, it's a close enough status that you've got folks accounted for that are being driven to school now, but they'll now be in walking distance of school, which would be counted in your traffic study, but would not actually be a physical car in real world.
Yeah, we can't reduce DOT walkers either. We can't reduce due to transit. We can't reduce due to walkers. We can't reduce to carpooling. It's basically, it's the trip generation manuals output and that's basically it. In regards to the crosswalk itself, that'll have, I mean, that's, that'll need to be vetted through the city and for DOT where, if it's at a DOT facility, you'll have to be through the DOT for, through the Division Traffic Engineer.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question that's not about the traffic.
Okay, we'll get to it.
Go over the traffic.
Any other questions about traffic?
And I can call him back up if I need to. I did want to try to address some of the other points. The first point about the master plan that was spoken to you, that was the master plan of McIntosh. This is not on the master plan of McIntosh. This is on the comprehensive plan. It's outside that master plan of McIntosh and complies with the comprehensive plan. And that's the thing, a property may be zoned, and I've done this a long time. I've been on city council. I've been in your side of things. A property may be zoned that's not consistent with the comprehensive plan and over time that can be rezoned. So the really, if you're looking at any idea of what, how it may develop, you always need to look at the comprehensive plan, not at how it's currently zoned. So I did want to make that point. There were some comments about maybe putting another school or commercial across the way. The traffic's going to be a whole lot more for a commercial use or a school use because, again, the peak traffic that schools generate, much as the comments that have been made, commercial is all day long. It's not peaks in the morning or peaks in the afternoon. It's traffic all the time. As far as the benefits to the community and there will be a tax-based benefit, apartments typically have a higher tax value than single-family residential. It provides living options for the community and they're efficient. When you extend water, sewer and services to apartments, you've got more folks you're serving with in a smaller area. When you extend water, sewer, roads and road improvements to single-family residential, you've got a whole lot more roads you've got to maintain going forward. You've got a longer length of water and sewer to provide those services to the equal number of residents in a single-family residential subdivision. So the net for the community is greater based upon the taxes you get in versus the costs and the, and the costs that the city may incur to provide those services. On the fire department coming in in the morning, that's something that we really will not impact. The apartments are beyond the school. The traffic that's coming that may be in front of the fire department is coming from the east to the west in the morning to drop off students. Our driveways are past that. So we're not contributing to the incoming traffic. Our folks are coming out and leaving in the other direction. So we're not going in front of the fire department. We're in the leaving part. And again, the improvement to University Drive and Bonner Bridge is intended to alleviate any backups that may occur there for the current and the In terms of the burb, there was a comment made about visibility because we're putting the burb, we've already been through TRC and we had to abide by site triangles. So we can't block any site distances according to DOT regulations. And we meet those regulations. As far as the crosswalk, again, it would have to be improved by NC DOT. This is an NC DOT road, but we're offering to do that to allow for walking traffic. And obviously, if that's going to occur, there would have to be a crossing guard like they are at many schools around the community. So that would have to happen. As far as apartments are concerned, you know, in anything, the type of folks that live in an apartment, the type of folks that live anywhere. They're not any different than any of us. I've lived in an apartment within the past two years because I sold my house and I was building a new one and didn't have a place to go. So I lived in an apartment. My son and his wife are both professionals. One's with, an engineer with Intel, one's an engineer with Cisco. They live in an apartment because they've chosen to do that. So it's not that they're, you can't draw the conclusion that the type of people are bad. But as Adams told me, they do background checks. That's part of the process now for anybody that's leasing apartments. And these apartments have, and when you're talking about the type of apartments, one bedrooms are to be rented for $850, two bedrooms for $1,100 a month, and the three-bedroom for $1,250 a month. This is not an inexpensive proposition. These are higher value apartments. Again, I think we've addressed the other things. In terms of dogs, there's going to plan to be a dog park within the community. So, and that's a common asset now or amenity now with apartments is to have a dog park. And that's the intent here as well, as far as any of that's concerned. Of course, you know, there are obviously a sidewalk. And if there's a sidewalk requirement, obviously through TRC, we do that and are glad to provide that. But it does provide that extra amenity to the community. You know, there's been no specific evidence regarding impact on property values. There just had, you can't just say, oh, I think property values are going to go down or whatever. There has to be some specific evidence to show that and we just haven't seen that. On the traffic side of things, lay testimony or lay opinions regarding traffic don't carry the weight. We have a traffic engineer who's looked at this very carefully, according to really strict protocols to make that determination. And at the very, when you say conservative, the highest number you can think of. And it still wasn't going to be an adverse impact by these apartments. They're such a small impact. So, anyway, so, you know, that's my point. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I understand that Councilmember Ward may have a question. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have or have any of my folks come up here and answer any questions you may have.
Let me ask that. I know the issue was raised about the impact on the value of the surrounding properties.
Yes, sir.
I understand the proposition that, you know, the tax base of the apartment there is going to be higher.
Right.
But if there's an impact on the surrounding properties and it bores that, I don't know. Let me just ask you one point. Was there any appraisal done about the impact or potential impact of the apartment to the surrounding communities?
There have not been, but there, I have a study that Harvard University did regarding that issue. And that, that study actually found the property values of single-family near apartments went up. I can say that I've done a lot of apartment complexes. Typically, what you find is exactly as you find here. And understand, these are, these apartments are surrounded by apartments or by townhomes, which are, which are considered higher density. They're not next to the single family. The single family is further into McIntosh. So we're not impacting those adjoining. There's a, you know, Mr. Rayner lives next door. I know that. But aside from that, there's not a single-family subdivision right next to it. But typically what you find is the multifamily is developed closer to the commercial, closer to the higher traffic generator, like closer to University Drive, and the single family is developed further back in. And, and that routinely is the way multifamily develops in order to allow to shorten those trips again. Because the, the theory is, and the planning part of it, and your planning staff did a great job on the comp plan, you want to have that multifamily in closer proximity to your services so that their trips are shortened rather than being across town somewhere.
But, you know, but the bottom line, there was no particular appraisal done for this project here.
Well, there was an appraisal for this project. Is that what you're, if you're asking?
No, I'm talking about, you know, an overall, you know, part of the impact on this.
Well, we wouldn't look beyond the properties that adjoin anyway. And there's no single family that adjoins it. So it really, it did make sense to do that kind of thing because there was no single family adjoining this. It was all multifamily or higher density development.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
More of a question for staff. This came up in a previous rezoning, but the R-15 designation is our placeholder designation that gets put on properties. Do you know if this R-15 was a placeholder when it was annexed in?
Well, it was originally ZOOM R-15. McIntosh had three different zoning designations in it when it was rezoned to CMX.
Right. Just for reference, when the city does a change to the comp plan or the uses plan, we do not go through and rezone every single property based on that plan. We wait for a developer, exactly like this case, to come through and request a zoning appropriate to the plan.
And that's, that's routine. I do rezonings across the state and that is routine for that to happen. If you have a new UDO, that's a different story. There may be some rezonings associated with that. But where you just have a comprehensive plan, you wait for the developer because you don't know what the particular use may be going forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson from council?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pick a couple of comments if we could. And in my view, from staff response, in my former life, I was the one in this seat when this, this particular development began. Wakefield Developments out of Raleigh came in early 2000s with the development. The plan that you should, I believe that you have there, I'm not sure if that's pre-2008 or post-2008. There's a substantial difference between pre and post with the recession and what happened with that development out there. Original concept that was sold to the community was a substantial number of units. Then there were going to be a bunch of apartments. There had to be more than that originally. The original concept in the early 2000s was actually more than that, if I'm not mistaken. The part of that was basically what we just said about the R-15 placeholder in terms of how it might be used at some point in time going forward. With all that being said, I'm not sure if through the traffic studies ever really resulted in what we thought. Because what happened was, the school came later. School came later and maybe a mistake, and I take full responsibility for this. We probably should have required roadwork there for the school, maybe if you really want to think about it. The other concept that was sold to this city was sidewalks. Sidewalks, sidewalk to sidewalks. And the concept that we taught you, we went and visited some of their developments in Raleigh, was kids walk to school.
They will walk to high.
Well, the question is, do the kids in your community walk to school?
The kids in our community are not allowed to walk to Highland because Highland, the way it was built, does not have sidewalks all the way to the front door, meaning that a child would have to cross a parking lot. Traffic comes in late.
I do want to point to clarify that. The sidewalk we're proposing would do just that. That's what we've committed to do.
It will not unless you are going to put sidewalks in on the school property itself.
Correct.
I don't know if you've agreed to that.
We have, we have agreed to do that if the schools are in agreement to do it. Yes.
Well, I mean, do we have any commitment from the schools then? Have you approached the schools on this?
Close there, approach the parking lot.
This is a serious subject because McIntosh, along with, every child in McIntosh, excuse me, my name's Alan Lynn. I do live in Tayside, in McIntosh on the lake, 4027 Conwy Lane is my address. And I've spoken at the Planning Commission meeting and chose not to speak here tonight. The, I spoke to the transportation department of Allamance, growing in school systems, two weeks ago and asked them about, is there a minimum or distance for busing in Allamance County for students? And I was told if any student requested busing, they have to get it. And Highland in particular, all students going there, if they want busing, they have to get it. There's no option of walking, because of the sidewalk situation. Thank you.
I'll comment. The sidewalk situation is something our staff, I and the council members have spoken about in, in length previously. It came up, Mike, if you want to, yeah, it's come up before, even before this development. I've spoken with the principal at Highland and I'll be meeting with the superintendent this week on that. Which is something that continues to be an issue. Healthy Allamance and our community partners have put together a program earlier this year specifically focused on kids and safety in communities. And one of the big pieces they talked about was access to walking to school.
Let me just get back. I was wanting to show you in Google Earth, we have talked, as the applicant discussed, originally we had, as we do with all of our developments, I don't have a better map than Google Earth would come up, but at the spur of the moment. All of our developments have sidewalk requirement along the frontage typically. So this will be along the frontage of the site, of their site. In addition to that, we had asked them to continue on down to cross over at the driveway of Highland Elementary School. Oh, thank you. Which would take you, you know, along the frontage here. Their property stops here at the red. And we had asked them, and they had agreed, to extend the sidewalk off their property to the driveway location and bring them across there. As was stated, there's not a sidewalk from that location to the door. And also discussing with the applicant, brought that point up and discussed the point, excuse me, that we could cross over the street here more in this location. That's an emergency access drive now with the school. But to extend the sidewalk on the school property with the school's approval, which has to be vetted and discussed, but to the door of the, of the school, which currently doesn't exist now, that's correct. In preliminary conversations with the school, they are, they are welcome to discuss that. And pending whatever happens here, we would go forward with that discussion. But that has been addressed. I spoke directly with them and that's a concept they would support. That has to be worked out, of course. But that would take you from the street to the door of the school, which currently doesn't exist now.
How about the kids coming in from the existing McIntosh area now? Will they have to cross the, walk the driveway into the school?
Well, they could use the sidewalk that's there currently and if they're on, depending on what side of street they're on, there's sidewalk there currently that they could walk to and use this new proposed sidewalk to the door.
Yeah, but will they have to cross the, the driveways where all the car track is going?
No, if they're, if they're from the McIntosh area, they would not have to walk to the driveway here. But the vehicular access is, they could stop at this location and take the sidewalk to the door of the school. So they would not have to walk up to the current driveway location.
Also, I did talk to the Assistant School Superintendent today about the ratio, which the school is used as apartments for kids. Per their numbers, for K-5, it's .104 per unit, which would equal to 30 kids that build out to Highland. At middle school, it's at .062, which would equal to 17.4 kids to the middle school population. And in high school, it is .045. It's surprising that just only 13 kids in the high school system. In terms of the numbers of the, of actually the kids in the system, you know, someone had emailed me about what was it going to do to Western Middle. According to the last numbers, which was I received today, no middle school in the county at this time is overpopulation. The Graham Middle School is at 91%. Hallfields is 96. Southern is 91. Turntime is 85. Western is 86. And Woodlawn is 88. Now, obviously, high schools, different story. Cunnings is actually over at 109%. Eastern Allamance is 161%. Graham High School is 95%. Seven Allamance is 141%. I'm not doing a bond proposal here either, just reading the numbers here. Western Allamance- Western Allamance is 121 percent, and Williams is 107 percent. Now, the whole story here now, though, in terms of elementary schools. Highland is proposed capacity is 711 kids based on their build-out, which, again, I think now is build-out, seems like if you get 166 percent build-out, now it don't work much anymore, but this past year, you had 712 kids that was enrolled there. Now, I'm not sure about this number, but in terms of estimate new students from development lists, and I do not know what that means, there is a substantial number of additional kids that could come into the Highland Elementary School and take that enrollment to 848. Now, I don't know what that term means, but that's, the school population isn't today.
Turn me old crap.
But, in reference to where these kids would go, I had an email where they would go if they leave Highland. There's certainly room in Turntime, there's certainly some room in Western Middle School, and I think there will be some additional room at Williams, doesn't seem to be an issue. And obviously, I'm not sure if the bond package passes, what happens at Western and Southern, but Western, Southern, and Eastern are, of course, the new high school could take place, and that could all spread out, but that's kind of where the school thing looks at right. But that ratio on the apartments really surprised me, and that came from the state the school system put together about four years ago.
You want to take a bet on it? I say that respectfully. I thought about those terms, too.
I just should tell you what the school system gave us today based on the numbers they used.
This is not a Q and A session, this is council members sharing information and research they've done in preparation for just tonight's discussion. Do I hear any further questions, comments from council, or do I hear a motion?
I've got a couple of questions for staff, really. Nolan, I'd ask you guys to give us some information about McIntosh and the build-out. You guys provided most of that. I just want to be sure I'm clear, and I want it to be part record, because I want to be sure that, is the issue traffic or is the issue apartments? From that standpoint, and I think to Harold's point, originally when this project was proposed, it was proposed in 2077 units. It was a much larger project than what is actually on the books for now. I think currently, it's 1,491 developable units. So I think to Harold's point, that's where all the apartments were originally when the project first came to fruition and was presented to council in 2003. So it was 2,077 units, and it was pared back by staff and working with the developer to, 586 units was reduced from what was originally proposed. Part of that was redesign, reconfiguration, some of it was stormwater requirements to meet stormwater rules, they had to cut the project back some. So the density was reduced from 2,077 to 1,491 from original. Currently, I think there's 864 units.
Current analysis, yes.
Current analysis, of which 66, or in addition, 66 units are currently under construction. So there's 561 lots not developed. So, as it stands right now, only 62 percent of the build-out is complete. So if traffic is bad now, somebody asks what, if the problem gets worse, what's going to happen? Well, the problem's going to get worse when it's built out regardless. So my concern, my question, Nolan, just for clarification, is, you know, if we accelerate some of the build-out by putting an apartment complex here with 288 units, that I do believe in the traffic analysis and that data, I mean, I've found it over my years, both on Traffic Commission and on council, to be fairly accurate with what we estimate. But just so everybody knows, if the problem continually gets worse, what is the process to alleviate that? Can you just give some background on that so everybody knows? There is a process through TAC, through how that works. For instance, Forest Dale, the intersection, St. Mark's Church Road, that intersection, Grand Hope Dale. As things get worse, as they're going to because of urban sprawl, urban development, everybody's running, it's going to get worse, traffic's going to get worse. It's not getting any better, it's only going to get worse. What is the process? Can you?
Sure. So if it's a state-maintained intersection, then it's eligible for state transportation funds, whether it's a widening project or an intersection project. So that's what the DOT has a process, and through our Metropolitan Planning Organization, which we have liaison through BDOT Office that supports that, and a couple of you sit on that board, Traffic Advisory Commission. But that is the process. We make requests to the state, and the state scores those projects. They have metrics that they use, whether it's congestion, accident data, things of that nature. And if it scores well enough, there's only a, there's a filing number, you know, amount of money at the state level for projects. If it scores well enough, then that project could be funded. And so this particular intersection that's most concerned in this area is Bonner Bridge and University. That particular intersection, at some point, could be requested through the state process to be funded. Or if the city decided that, you know, they wanted to spend some funds on that intersection, certainly DOT would love for the city to do that. So I think in this particular instance, one benefit to this is you've got developers who want to do something, not really required of them, but benefits an existing issue, and really mitigates some of the issues that came in with the school.
Could you touch Danbrook and Bonner Bridge are both city-controlled, not state-DOT roads?
So.
Can you touch on that?
Yes. So state maintains Danbrook, in fact, I'll just point to it here. From University Drive, this piece of Bonner Bridge is state maintained. Beyond that, it's city maintained, and then Danbrook is state maintained.
So my point is, the process is very scientific, the way the state DOT works with those within our Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's very scientific data on trip counts, congestion periods, peak times, accident data, all of that to score. And it's not, well, you like this project better than this one, so we're going to fund one and not the other. That's not how it works. Councilmember Ward and I both serve on that committee on behalf of council in the city of Burlington, which is a multi-jurisdictional committee to help the state understand what our needs are, both locally and throughout the county. So that's an important piece. So if I look at this, now, there's 864 units built out now, and everybody's talking about the traffic congestions that we're experiencing, and mostly because of Highland Elementary, and mostly at peak times for Highland Elementary, I get that. But adding a lane, we're going to mitigate, if a lane is going to add 20 percent more egress, we're going to mitigate the traffic by that amount. That's just a fact, it's just a known fact, that you're going to have extra ability to get out. That's going to improve it from what it is now. That doesn't mean it's not going to get worse down the road. As McIntosh continues to build out, it's going to get worse. And that's when the state has to get involved and provide us some assistance on that piece, and we have to provide them input. But my point is, at least in my understanding of traffic and how the whole process works and what the developers offering to do here, which is unusual, is to alleviate an immediate need. So is it about traffic or is it about apartments? Because traffic is going to get better short-term.
If you're going right, it's not if you're going left.
Correct, but out is out. Out onto Danbrook is, or out onto University of McIntosh on Lake is out.
And with one lane, how long, how blocked will University get there?
That's another question. So, so I understand the stacked data for University does not appear to be bad based on what you guys showed, so I'm not as concerned about that. I am, two points I do want to be sure I clarify from my own understanding. And Mike, you can answer this question, maybe you or Nolan. Have we had any alarming stats from accident data at University and Bonner Bridge? Anything that shoots a red flag up to us?
No, sir.
No. Does staff have any concern about reducing the entrance to one lane, and any stacked times that may put back towards the exit route on the interstate?
Not in this instance. The right turn lane, I mean, there's two ingress lanes, but you really don't need two ingress lanes there.
Correct.
So the right turn lane's really, you know, supplemental.
Okay. All right, so I'll let you, thank you.
One more question then, to dig up real old graves, is that at one point in time, there was a discussion about a fourth exit out of McIntosh. That exit, if I remember correctly, would be the road that goes in front of the clubhouse and goes due west. No, I'm sorry, due west, I'm sorry. Due east.
Southeast, yes.
So Houghville Road.
That's right. Now, that was, if I'm trying to recall here, that was 15 years ago, but that never, that ever showed on any of the plans?
It showed on the 2003 McIntosh plan. It was contemplated, okay? It showed with a note that says, you know, future by others. So it wasn't something that was a requirement of the development, but it was shown as, you know, this is a concept of how you could have additional access into the southeast side of McIntosh.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, there's some topo issues with that, and also right-of-way issues. I'm really confident, but, you know, the one part about the common sense side, you really got one major interest into that development. The other exit out to the west gets you out towards Springwood Park, which makes it difficult to get on 40. It's impossible to get on 40, really. You could, you could turn that by the park and go down and get on 40, but that's kind of a different way out. But I think that other concept was one that would get people at least to Houghville Road, and then could get them back on 40, another route. I'm not sure if that's even practical or not anymore, but I do believe that was at one time.
I mean, I think it's practical, it's just a matter of how would it get done? Would it be done through, organically through development over time, or is it, you know, a city-initiated project, which, you know, obviously competes with many other projects that the city would be considering, so. But what you have here is a study that shows that the current intersection is going to handle at least what's proposed and what's already been approved in that area. But if you could ever get that greasing connection, I think that would be a very positive thing going forward. And if development occurs in that area, you know, staff would be looking to try to push developers to provide that type of connection.
That's the road I asked you about, Raleigh.
You shared the road, I was trying to.
I'm not sure if there's a graphic here that goes that far out, honestly. I don't think there is. You could probably pull it, try to find Google Maps or something like that if you want.
While you're pulling that up, any other questions from council?
No, just a comment about, it just seems that the school issue, the traffic and the school is the presenting problem here, and that it should be, I think, a separate question from what we're talking about in terms of the design. It does seem to me that the developer is going the distance here to try to help that situation, but I'm also wondering if we shouldn't be putting together some kind of group that would approach the school system about how this can be fixed, because this is making people crazy. And the developer can only do so much, there's that idea of the school crossing and the sidewalk onto the school property is a very useful piece, but this isn't the first time we've heard about the school situation and the traffic there, and it's not getting solved. So what do we do as a community? How do we solve that problem? Who's talking to the school system? You said something to somebody, but it seems to me the residents and the school population have a hand, they have a very strong case here to go to the schools.
I think our biggest concern, to talk right turn, is not necessarily Bonner Bridge and University. That's not what the safety concern is for the majority of the people. It is the intersection, it is right in front of the school. I wouldn't, I don't have kids in school, so it's not as big of a deal for me. My thing is, the two-minute delay that it's going to take for fire departments to get across the traffic between the left. And I'm not even talking about, think about the residents in the apartments. They are never going to be able to make a left-hand turn safely out of the apartment complex. And that doesn't affect me, that affects them. If I went to buy there and I couldn't get out when I went to look at, or to rent there, I mean, you have to look at background stuff. It's not the major intersection, it's the part without the light. And then you want to put a crosswalk and let somebody guard kids walking across it?
I would.
They're great ideas, but y'all are talking about the wrong, the traffic study was at Bonner Bridge. We're not talking, it's in person, school. That's the issue. The developer needs to worry about their residents taking a left to get out.
Which means they go right, put kids at risk.
I mean, that, it's that intersection right there.
The development has a downturn.
We're beyond.
Councilmembers, ask me a question.
Do you want to respond to?
Well, I'm just saying, we're beyond the school entrance, so a left-hand turn out of our apartment complex is not where the traffic's queuing, it's queuing before it gets to.
But you've got to enter that traffic.
Yeah, you have to come in that traffic. You won't be able to make a left out of your development and get into that traffic, is the concern.
Kathy, I appreciate your comment on that. I think that is something that needs to be addressed. In preparation for tonight, one of the things I was reading was a COP study, it's Community Oriented Policing, specifically talking about traffic around schools. And they touched on some of the same points that Mark Fenton, who was the speaker of that Healthy Allamance Community Session, talked about, about, there's a whole slew of solutions for traffic around schools, because the solution is not more cars around schools, because combining cars and children is not a recipe for healthy families and communities. The solutions that they propose for things like walking school buses, making sure you have infrastructure, the report details pages and pages of. And I think that's the conversation that needs to really move to a further step with the school district. I'm happy to bring that up later this week in meeting with the superintendent.
Within the same concept of that, there's actually a movement to eliminate school drop-offs around schools. Certain municipalities have already done to eliminate traffic congestion. As a matter of fact, I think Healthy Allamance made a post or a comment about that on social media just this week alone, about how car drop-offs should not be allowed. They should get you to walk or take a bus.
There's already a bus drop-off shortage.
Well, that's, I'll one problem at a time.
I will point out that study.
Exactly, don't agree anymore, it's all one at a time.
That study in their test, in their test studies where they applied those characteristics, was able to see a 50 percent increase in students walking to school and a 26 percent decrease in the number of cars dropping off at school.
I'm sure Nolan has his answer. I wonder how many kids in the McIntosh community make up, what percentage of them make up what the kids who go to Highland School.
So a question for another discussion.
Another discussion, but I just. At an elementary school, there's two bus, it takes two bus loads just to get the elementary school kids that ride. I mean, two trips in one neighborhood, and that's just the people that take the bus.
Just come here one more. When school starts.
Recognizing the topic on our agenda, which is this public hearing, I think it's appropriate to request staff to continue to work on the school-related issue, because being separate from this is already an issue around children's safety to and from school and in that area. And that's going to be an issue no matter what decisions made this evening. And so I think council members would be in agreement that we'd like to see some opportunities for further progress on that. Recognizing item two on our agenda, do I hear a motion from council?
Mayor, let me ask you one more question to your staff here. Is it? Is it, if there was a desire to ever widen Bonner Bridge Road and add extra lanes? Especially in the congestion area we have now?
Which is basically from university to the school. That's the primary area. You've got congestion coming in where folks stack up into the center turn lane.
Right.
Inclined with weather days, sometimes it could be worse. I've seen it backed up to Danbrook. So you definitely have some significant backup there. We have worked with the school in the past because there were, there were points where the school was not, when, when this was designed, there's two, there's two storage lanes all the way into the, to the drop-off area, but the school wasn't maximizing the use of that. So at one point, our staff had reached out and said, could, you know, please work with us here, you know, and didn't resolve the problem, but it helped. So it helped them to maximize the use of that. I'm not really sure if they've, you know, if they maintain that throughout the year. I'm not sure. We would have to look at that. That's something we have to monitor. But yeah, I mean, if you, if you want to look at that, we really would need to assess from a transportation perspective, is the capacity needed to do that? Does it justify the expense to, you know, to widen? And if so, you know, then it becomes a competing interest with, with other, you know, needs in the city. But the main, the main area that we see queuing obviously is into the school and then at the intersection in the AM peak. And so I think what this particular improvement that accompanies this proposed development helps address the egress portion, which is, is an issue. And would, again, as we know, there's another, you know, 500-plus units to be constructed here, just in the McIntosh area. We know that's going to continue to have larger queues.
But even if we added lanes to ingress into the school, if I'm not mistaken, that's only basically a one lane to get, if the parent comes in, drops the kid off, then comes back out.
So I'll kind of take you through it, because I've done this many times. But if you're coming in, there's two lanes, but the leftmost lane is really for buses and people who are parking here to drop kids off. And so this, this portion of the dual lanes is really, you know, not used for, for folks queuing up to drop kids off, other than the fact that they're just getting to the parking lot. However, the balance, the other lane comes here and then you end up with two lanes all the way to the front of the door. And typically, what used to happen anyway was they would stop vehicles here and then let them through one at a time to drop kids off and to pick them up, of course, in the afternoon.
So there's no way you could get two lanes of traffic going into the school, basically like what happens at turn time?
So if you're suggesting dual lefts coming off of Bonner Bridge into here?
Yes.
I think that there would be some benefit in that, you know, I don't know the exact ratio, but there are a number of folks that come into this left lane and you look at this parking lot in the mornings, there's significant people parking here. Some people like to water their kids into school, particularly when they're younger. I've done that in the past. So I'm not saying there wouldn't be any benefit. I think that what would be, if we really want to entertain that, that's, you know, staff doing some real analysis and going out and just, you know, looking and seeing how much benefit that would be.
Of course, that affects the school system, that problem.
Yes. Of course, you know, if you're constructing left-turn lanes out here, now you're getting to dual lefts, you're going to have to have a signal, you know, things of that nature. You can't just have dual lefts without, without a signal. That's a dangerous situation. But it's certainly something, you know, that we could look at as you're looking long-term into how to address the school issues.
Any other questions, Councilman Brown? I can answer that. We don't own the land of Danbrook, so... Do I hear a motion from Council?
I don't agree that apartments is, is not the right thing or the proper thing to go there. I don't, I don't, I'm not, is this, is this plan developed? That was indicated very early on in terms of the impact on housing in itself would be minimal at any. But what I do see right now, and my concern is, is they've just been built right across the worst traffic area we've gotten in the whole development.
That's right, yes. That's right.
And so with that being said, I just don't know what we should put there until we try to figure a way to work with the traffic area, the traffic problem that we now face. So I'm going to be denied the request based on that particular comment due to the traffic issue at this time.
Motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Mr. Johnson, did you answer?
Can I, can I ask that, if that's the concern and there've been ongoing discussions with the schools, I think the, I personally, from what I'm hearing tonight, it's an issue with the school and that solution needs to be addressed regardless of what apartments or whatever else goes around there. We're willing to just, if you could just continue it long enough for us to, we'll be glad to enter into discussions and talk with the school system, and there may be a smarter way to, to deal with it. I don't know. I'm, you know, between your traffic staff and DOT and us, maybe we can come up with a solution, but rather than just say, because I think Mr. Rowan was saying this is appropriate for that location, it's all dealing with the school. And there was never a TIA done, to my knowledge, when the school was built, and so therefore there were no transportation improvements done when the school is built. And if the school is the problem, then obviously that's where we need to go to come up with a solution, whether it be, you know, healthy schools and we build the sidewalk to help encourage walking, or we increase the number of buses, including finding a way to hire bus drivers to have additional buses to bus children in, just like we're doing in communities where we're having mass transit to help deal with those issues. You know, and being in Raleigh, you know, that's the whole deal, is increasing the number of buses to facilitate mass transit. And I think, and reality is, in this location, that's where the issue was with the school. But I also think we need to explore further, as Nolan was mentioning, about that ingress and ingress there in the mornings, and is there any, still any way where that's bogging down and preventing traffic from coming in? From our traffic engineer, we understand that the traffic, from his initial impressions, and again, we'd go out there and look again, traffic doesn't back up to the west as far as where we're proposing, so making that turn isn't as much of an issue. Traffic coming from McIntosh to turn into the school doesn't back up that far. But in any event, those are the things we can look at, and we're willing to look at. We want to be part of the solution, which is obvious from what we were trying to do at the intersection there. So I'd like to have the opportunity to be involved in those discussions with the schools and address this issue once and for all, so it doesn't keep coming up for you and doesn't keep coming up for us. It's not, you know, we didn't create the problem, the school was built there, and it is where, what it is. If we can be part of the solution, we're willing to do that.
And respectfully, there is a motion, a second.
Well, I asked you to consider continuing it for that reason.
Any discussions from Council?
I think that would be a wonderful idea, because it takes a collaboration to form a solution to a problem, and this problem's not going to go away. If, if the developers willing to go further down this road and look into what can be done, they've already proven that they're willing to put money up to do that, there may be a better solution for that money than what's currently proposed. I'd like to see what those solutions are. I think we owe it to the residents out there to take a look at that comprehensive.
We just, I mean, look at the staff now, this is not, something's going to happen overnight, is it? Bob, I'd be willing to draw my motion and table this.
Come on. Mr. Butler can make a procedural motion, but we'd like to continue this matter, that type of present, I know, subsequent motion.
And I would make a procedural motion that we continue the matter until a resolution can be determined if one can.
And that resolution, I would think, Jim, would certainly include these people in the room, they're the number one stakeholders.
The one of the stakeholders to be involved in this thing?
Sure. Procedure. Absolutely. If it takes three months, whatever you're going to do.
Do we pick a date? So what would be an adequate timeline from a date? Nolan?
The question is...
So to pick a date certain, a time certain, what would be an adequate timeline to request that everybody collaborate and see what we can come up with on this, with staff's assistance?
One of the challenges right now is schools not in. I think to really assess the schools, the school needs to be in.
That's right.
Session, so we can evaluate, you know, and analyze traffic. So it needs to be after, you know, really set sometime after.
For 90 days a date certain, just pick a time 90 days out, and then if we need additional time, we can so choose it.
That would be the thing to do, I think.
And whatever that date is, we're fine with that. I just wanted to affirm that we'd be fine with a date 90 days out from this date for that, whatever council meeting's close to that.
So either November 20th or we can choose December 4th?
We prefer November if we can get that date.
Actually, it's November 6th. We don't have it.
For the holiday, Thanksgiving.
We'll have the second one to November.
So let's make it, let's, let's do that to November 6th, and then if we need to extend it beyond that, we'll certainly do that. I would make that motion.
Do I hear a second to the motion to extend to November 6th?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been second to continue to November 6th. Any discussion, questions regarding that motion? All those in favor of the motion to continue to November 6th, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much, councilmembers. Thank you all for your attendance. There were a couple of questions regarding that process. We do wish for it to be a community collaborative process. All of your feedback will be very helpful. We appreciate your work with Mr. Johnson and his team, and we appreciate having them on the ground to continue working for the best solution for Brooklyn going forward. That's clearly evident that you are passionate about this issue, passionate about your community. We appreciate that, and we want you to continue to be engaged in this process. Do I hear any further discussion this evening from the council? Otherwise, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Real quick, I will mention Tuesday, August 7th is National Night Out. Again, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have numerous block parties across the city. If your community would like to participate in one, you can contact Greg Turner at our police department, or you can check out our website for more information on National Night Out. All those in favor of a motion to adjourn, please say aye.